Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Dave Father.
Here.
Jay M. Laughlin.
Here.
Kelly Johnson.
Here.
Mark Joby. Is absent for now. Matt Spalding.
Here.
Norma Benson.
Here.
Rick Graves.
Here.
Tony Riley. Is absent for now. Zach Langren.
Here.
We do have a quorum. But this is a workshop, so we're not going to make any decision tonight.
Okay, before we start, as Mochi said, this is just a workshop, so we're not taking any testimony of any kind. We're just gonna be doing between staff and us, the planning commission.
Okay, so I'm just gonna give a brief introduction for what tonight is about, if that's okay?
Yes, it would be.
So, thank you, everyone, for attending the Planning Commission Workshop tonight. We are going to talk about large-scale solar development in our county. So, as many of you know, there's a moratorium on large-scale solar projects over one acre in size, located within ten township and ranges in the Golden Dell and Centerville Valleys. And I have a map that I can share. So here is the area that's currently under a moratorium. The moratorium prohibit the planning department to accept land use applications on solar projects, large-scale solar projects. If the project is going to be cited anywhere within these ten townships and ranges. Under current zoning regulations, we have the permitting process established. So they are the conditional use permits or a energy overlay zone permit. If the project is not entirely located within the energy overlay zone, which is this yellow line here and down here, then we have to go through a conditional use permit process. A conditional use permit process require the project have a public hearing before the Board of Adjustment. However, there are no written directives in our zoning ordinance to address some middle requirements and performance standards such as setbacks. Except, you know, the only area in our zoning code, you can find there's a setback requirement. If your project is located within the energy overlay zone, then you have to maintain a minimum five hundred to fifteen hundred feet setback from a residence. The range is to be determined during the permitting process. And that's subject to aesthetics impacts, geography and project size and other factors. For the planning department to process a large-scale solar project, we always relies on existing federal and state requirements. Also, local land use process, which is the CUP and the EOZ, ordinance policies and SEPA, the State Environmental Policy Act, which is a big items that we use so we can develop mitigations along the process. We have the moratorium within these areas that I'm sharing on the screen. And the directions from the planning, excuse me, from the Board of County Commissioner is to have the planning commission to review and update the county's plans and regulations. The goal is not to prohibit large-scale projects, but to have a process and performance standard established. So we can have a predictable, efficient and sensitively citing process in place. So that's how I understand from the commissioners. Tonight, we are going to have a general discussions among the planning commission members because we have a lot of new members and some of you know a lot about large-scale solar development. And I don't know what everyone knows, and I have a lot of information collected over time. And I do not want to just flow everything that I have at you. So I want you to have a discussions among yourselves and I will help along the way. So you can help me to determine what kind of information that you feel that is helpful along this process. And I'm hoping tonight you can maybe develop, we can develop a list of items that I can collect and share with you. And then we can have another workshop in May. And the next planning commission meeting is going to be on Monday, May fifteenth at six P M. So that's all I have for right now.
Do you know how many people live within the moratorium area?
I don't have a numbers, but there are lots of smaller-sized lots. There are a lot more residents compared to projects in East County.
Yeah.
I think that number is close to eighty-five hundred.
In the moratorium area?
Correct.
And in the overlay zone that you said it was fifteen hundred feet setback from a residence?
Five hundred to fifteen hundred.
Five hundred to fifteen hundred.
From a residence, not property line, but a residence.
What determines whether it's five hundred or fifteen hundred, do you know?
The code is not very clear, so typically we look at that during the permit application process. And then depending on if the landowner is a participant or have any agreement with the developer. And then we also look at factors such as, you know, the topography of the site or how it's going to impact the landowner and then we can make that decision.
So, Mochi, if you know, surely we need, you know, the information on the moratorium itself and whatever. We, you know, I went online and read, but I'm sure there's, there's more in the commissioner meeting. I'm sure there's more than what I read. And so maybe the details of that and what the expectation is. You know, we've seen the moratoriums in the past, but what is that expectation as far as how to proceed? Is that what we're looking for more than anything? It's like, okay, how do we get from here with a moratorium, which we can't leave on forever, right? So, so how we're gonna pursue getting the moratorium policy, whatever necessary, so that the moratorium can be eliminated, right? Is that's kind of the goal?
Yes.
Okay.
So, just a little background. The county commissioners adopted a moratorium back in January without a public hearing. And then in February, because under the R C W thirty-six seventy-seven ninety-five, commissioners has the authority to enact a moratorium. However, they are required to have a public hearing to take public testimony within sixty days. We had the public hearing back in February. Commissioners took testimonies and they continued the public hearing, but closed to public testimony. And they've been deliberating and they still deliberating because the public hearing is still open.
Oh.
Tomorrow, we are going to have that under unfinished business. And I believe that's at two P M. on the commissioner's agenda. I drafted a resolution to have findings and conditions based on the discussions and deliberations among the commissioners and have that in front of them tomorrow. So I, I, I don't know if they would sign that resolution, but that is based upon the discussions and okay, so, so basically, what they would do is they have some findings and they will amend and continue the six months, six months moratorium from January tenth as stated in the resolution at that time and extend that for six months. So the moratorium will now, if the commissioner adopted the resolution tomorrow, the moratorium will be expiring on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. They can extend the moratorium, is the needs there? They just need to have another public hearing. But our hope is to maybe with the help of the planning commission and the public, we can have some resolution in place and we are only focusing on these ten townships and ranges on this map here. Right now, the moratorium does not change the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan. The moratorium is, is only stopping the planning department to accept any kind of land use regulation, uh, applications during the pendency of the moratorium. And the planning department is directed by the commissioner to work with the planning commission to establish zoning directives or regulations for these ten townships and ranges. And trying to have regulations in place. And then we can have that recommendation and present that to the county commissioner. So that's what I hear from, from the board at this time.
Mochi, if the planning commission adopts zoning regulations or whatever, why will not the EOZ simply override them anyway? Does that make sense to you or are we changing zoning that will not be overridden by the EOZ?
Correct, because we are going to write, so everyone know we have an energy overlay zone. A portion of these townships and ranges, like between those solid thick yellow line, those are the EOZ area. My direction here, because it cover both with the, like, we, sorry, the moratorium covers lands inside and outside of the energy overlay zone. So we are working on a new set of solar, large-scale solar development regulations only for those areas. And the new set of regulations should probably trump or overwrite the EOZ requirements within this area, just to be clear.
And are we looking eventually at the whole county as well, dealing with it or?
That's a possibility. I think as we proceed with the discussions along the way, if this is the recommendation from the planning commission, we can certainly start that process. But for right now, I, I think it's kind of important for us to focus our effort to this ten townships and ranges for right now.
Okay, thanks.
Mochi, this is, this is Jay, can you hear me?
Yes.
A question, I think, I think similar to what Rick was getting at. I'm just, I'm just curious about more context and the information that you referenced that you gathered. Is there a good way by which you can share that with us? And even your introductory remarks were helpful context. I appreciate seeing that in writing.
Yes, I, I can surely send that on. I kind of intentionally not to send any documents to the planning commission for this workshop because I don't want to give you the perception to be biased or to just look at information that I collected over the time, over the years. I've been doing this for a few years now. Still learning because we development and solar developments are very different when you talk about renewables. And so tonight, I think I'm happy to answer more questions that the planning commission may have. But I think you might want to have this opportunity to talk among yourself to kind of establish baseline of expectations and find out what kind of information that might be useful for, for every one of you to help with this process.
So if nobody, I'll so the area outside of the energy overlay zone will have to deal with that separately. Looks like it's affecting like four zones, maybe, you know, like general rural, forest resource, extensive ag and open space, so we'll look at all those and, and some some, in some of those zones, you may, maybe all of them, you eliminate the possibility really. It's not even described in the, as a conditional use that you could really have a solar project, you know, I mean, there might be some questionable language. In ag, not a chance, and forest resource doesn't look like, you know, things like that. So what I'm saying, we'll have to look individually at each of those zones. And then the energy overlay zone, you know, of course, when we go through that, I guess, really, I tried to read it. You know, I went through, kind of refreshed my mind so that what we did in two thousand and five and then when we hit a thousand megawatts, came back in twenty-ten and looked again and see if we ever really put much time and effort into the solar. At that point in time, it just kind of got passed off as something that wasn't practical, I guess, you know, so think we're gonna really have to pull everything out of the energy overlay zone that we really think applies to solar because it just in, in analyze that and see if we really think it was addressed. And kind of go from there, maybe, I don't.
So the energy overlay zone is really more talk about a process. It's not really specific in terms of performance standard such as setback density. Or, you know, like right now, we do not have any limit to if you have, for example, you have a thousand acres site control or leased area. And within this thousand acres, if you take away critical areas or other areas that is just not practical because it's too steep or whatever reason, then you may end up with eight hundred acres that the developer can do studies on. And then out of these eight hundred acres, they, for variety of reason, they can limit to actually the impacted area that they potentially could put solar panels and project substations and other like roads, power lines, anything within this area. So responding to Rick's suggestion, that's great, but I also do not want the planning commission have two set of rules. Because essentially, we are focusing or what I'm envisioning is we are going to develop a set or maybe a new section within our zoning ordinance to talk about solar development, like large-scale solar development. So even though they might, like, a project may be within this energy overlay zone, however, if the physical location for the project site is within this mapped area, any one of those, they can go through the EOZ process, no problem. The process remain the same. However, they are also subject to this new set of zoning regulations that we are going to put together. So that's what I think that needs to happen. But, you know, I'm taking inputs and I try to answer questions because this is not an easy topic for me to do. I need help because if you rely on me alone, that is not going to be a good regulations that we're going to develop. And I don't want to just develop something and, you know, just give you the document for you to review and comment. I do not believe that's the intent to have you input and the public's input, so.
Well, the EOZ is mostly geared to wind, wind energy, not solar. Solar was really a something we didn't think would ever come here back twenty years ago. And solar, as far as that extensive ag is concerned, once you fill up, however many acres are gonna fill up, that ground is done. There are no more ag there, period. And that seems to me goes against the comp plan for preserving the, the farm ground in Clickitak County.
Or during the duration of the project at a minimum, right? Because once they fence the area for the next thirty, forty years with the solar projects, I do not believe you can do any kind of ag within the fence area. You might be able to do it outside of the fence area. Some of the arguments that I see from the developers are because after the project is over, they will decommission the project properly. And then everything will be revert back to close to the pre-project conditions. And therefore, you can bring ag back. But we are all so new to this process.
Yeah, but there's, there's such thing as renewing the thing for another forty, fifty years. And in all those years, that good farm ground is just done. And I, I'm not comfortable with that.
So are you saying that if they are within farmed ground, not just the zoning as extensive, but they actually using the land for real farming, ranching? Should we even allow solar development?
Well, then you get into the sticky widget of property rights and things, but for the best ground, you know, the alternative would be put wind, wind turbines on it where you can farm around them, graze cows around them, go on your property, because I've heard that these solar farms, the owner can't even go on the property anymore. They're they're locked out.
Mac?
Yeah. Sometimes as a commission member, I, I puzzle, we spend time on things that sometimes not productive. I'm suggesting so far that we're not doing, being productive, but sometimes a project is brought to us and our job as commissioners is to, how does it impact the county, the county people? We don't care that it impacts fish. We don't care because that's not us. That's the fish and wildlife people. We don't care about ecology because that's ecology and we shouldn't care about a whole bunch of stuff. We should really be kind of focusing on what our authority is, which is how does this impact property rights and the livability of the county? I, I think that's and so this whole energy thing and solar panels enters into kind of a new area because we don't have the area expertise. When some of these solar farms were first initiated, there were no batteries. There, there was no battery storage. And there's some risk with that. As a, as a owner, as a stakeholder in the county, I, I, I care about that stuff. The question.
Is your mic on?
Yes, I'm not, probably not close enough. The question is, you know, what, what are, what's our authority? I mean, it's almost like we need legal counsel because I have a pretty strong opinion that, that, that those there needs to be some really good controlled science protection. If we're starting to see massive batteries that we know little about, I mean, both as the commission and the, I'm not sure the industry knows that much either, so I, I'm, I'm sort of puzzling as to what our authority is and how deep we can delve into it. On the topic of the last meeting we had about the S M P, we talked about no net loss. It, it's almost troubling that I don't know that I'm using that term appropriately, but to take arable land out of production where the windmills, you know, you've still got cattle going around them, they'll start farming around them. We're, that, that land is done with, with the solar panels. And it strikes me that that is that we're taking that out of production. And, you know, what's our authority to, to offer opinions and rules around that?
Okay, so I, I'm trying to answer questions and I don't, I'm not pro or against solar development, just to be clear on that one. So for zoning ordinance, we have this general police power delegated from state law to the county that we can locally have zoning regulation to regulate land use. We can do that. In regard to farmland, we are a partially planned G M A county, Growth Management Act county. So we are required to designate resource lands, including ag lands in our county. However, because we are partially planned G M A county, we are not required necessarily to have regulations to protect farmland. So it's, it's different than Yakima County, for example, because they are a fully planned G M A county and those are some of the concerns that they have. I'm not saying that we are not required to, therefore, we shouldn't. I'm not saying that either. But we, because our county is kind of unique in that regard, we have one solar project is almost completed their construction in East County. We have another solar projects is, you know, in the process through the county, going through the EOZ process. While we are trying to say, you know, we have all these good discussions about whether we are comfortable to even allow solar projects within ag, extensive ag zoning. I also want to remind everybody that there's also another process. Developer does not necessarily need to go through the local planning department to get their project approved. That's another state process. Everybody is probably really well aware of is the F S A C, the Energy Siting Council process. They actually can, the governor can preempt local regulations. That being said, I'm not the expert in the F S A C process, but I do believe developers are required to one, go through a land use consistency hearing to determine if the proposal is consistent with local land use or not. Right now, we have no prohibition in our county. We have a comprehensive plan that desperately need to be updated. We have zoning ordinance that does not really have very specific performance standard requirement in our code. We rely heavily on SEPA to get our project through, which been working okay with the wind development. Solar, we also rely on SEPA as well. I know there's, the public have opinions whether that is a good process or not bad process. But for planning staff, we implement the ordinance signed by the county commissioner. And within the EOZ zoning, both wind and solar are permitted uses. However, like Matt and Rick said earlier, we did not anticipate to this type, this scale of that, like thousands of acres of solar panels cover the land. We did not anticipate that to happen in our county. And I think that's why the current board decided to have this moratorium within the Centerville and Golden Dell Valleys because we want to establish some kind of regulations. Then when we have another project, if there's another project going through the state process, they can go through our process right now because we have a moratorium, but if they want to apply with the state, hopefully, we will have some kind of regulations in place and they will at least have a determination where they are consistent with local zoning or not. At the end of the day, the governor can preempt local regulations. There's the project in Yakima County been through F S A C process. And they just get the signed governor's approval earlier this month and is posted on the F S A C website. But that's the state process. We, we can participate, but we may not have too much of an influence there. However, we do have some influence in regard to local zoning. So that's why we are here tonight to try to see if we can get somewhere.
Well, there appears to me to be several different landowners within this moratorium area. And that's quite a bit different than what has happened out East County where the there are not that many people, the, the land was owned by that they projected that one that's operating. One or two different families own it all. And it really impacts nobody but them. But in this one, it looks like neighbor X is gonna get next to it, whether he wants it or not, unless he's included.
The, Matt, one of the things I think is worth discussing is I'm, I live near the one that's about ready to fire off, I guess. Not terribly far away. Much of that land I was on prior to it going under construction, that's not, was not terribly arable land. That was
No, I, I know where you're talking about.
It was cobbles and it, I mean, weeds grew on it. It wasn't, you, you couldn't grow anything on it. This is, is a bit concerning because I, I'm not a farmer, but I I'm not a farmer, but my takeaway is that that's some pretty good. Land compared to what we've got dealing with out in the Bickleton area.
What I remember hearing when they were going to build that. Before they built that new B B P A line for the night substation that. The local people wanted to follow the old along the old easement that they already had for the other line and Bonneville Powers said no. And they got right through some of the best farm ground out there.
So J, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yeah, I was just hoping for some clarification. Can we establish for certain that there will be no? Uh agriculture as we know it involved with with a proposed. Uh, solar farm project. I mean, I've seen solar projects in other parts of the country where they grazed under solar panels and. Just to make sure my memory wasn't failing me, I look it up here and see that there's even a. An American Solar Grazing Association promoting that kind of use is 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 it something that we've? That we know for certain in Clickatack County that those projects would. Recclude any kind of grazing or other agricultural uses of those lands via fence or something as you've described?
For right now, I believe the developer will not allow any type of grazing. Um, within the inside the fence area, there are pilot projects um in another state. That they will allow for sheep, I believe. Um, that is something that could be considered. Um, but definitely no cattle because they will damage the panels. But that will be something that is um a topic. That is popular for the a lot of people are talking about the possibility to. Have some, you know, some other users other than a fence area of like a thousand acres. Have nothing but solar panels. Um, but that's what I know with projects in Clickatack County for right now.
Thank you for clarifying.
I think that the this, I know you don't want to really talk about specific projects, but the project that's been proposed right now through the F S A C process is. Takes up something like twenty one hundred acres on its exterior boundary and is gonna. Is hoping to cite around twelve hundred acres of panels within that. I don't know how many miles a chain link fence that constitutes, but it's a lot of chain like that's. That its exterior perimeter is. A a little less than, I mean, it's less than double the area where they're gonna put the panels. I think J D, your comment about grazing, I've looked at that quite a bit, actually. Um, and I can tell you, as we've been having this meeting, my daughter is telling me my cows have trashed defense and they're in a pasture they're not supposed to be in right now. And cows are good at wrecking stuff and um. Sheep sheep are not quite as much, although they are curious. What I have seen and personally in Prineville. And I have not looked at Lund Hill closely as they run direct current conductors thirty inches above the ground. Where the rock is too close to the surface for them to dig. Um, and so sheep do love to chew on things, I guarantee you. And so conductors that are above ground would. I guess their hair would have even better curl after a while. Um, but I I don't, I'm not sure. Actually, I'm I've seen a project that Oregon State did and while I'm at Valley regarding. Uh, pasturing sheep under panels. My sense personally of it is that they. Came up with a conclusion that it will work and then found things that would verify that it would work. Maybe it will work. Um, but the but I don't think cattle are even an option. As I said, they just like to wreck things, especially around home.
Well, they rub on everything.
Thanks.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just thanking him for the additional comment.
So. When we went through the energy overlay zone process, you know, um, they. The big selling point was the financial benefit to the county. Okay, that was like the, but all they were talking about was really winter. Now, they didn't and talk about any benefit from solar at all. They they didn't even. But the wind turbines and the the financial benefits and and that seemed to be a big thing, a P U D. Involved to giving testimony about how this was gonna help the county. I don't know. There's been questions since. That it really provided the benefit that. We were told it was going to provide to the county, but here nor there, but I guess in terms of this. Uh, that was totally different. We didn't lose any ag land. Um, in in the process necessarily, it benefited some of the. Farmers to have the leases. They still continue to farm, looking at a totally different thing. Um, so it takes like to lose ag land, you know, and I never support losing. Ag land at all. I didn't support it.
I can interject, Bickleton got a new school and a new fire hall because of the winter.
Did they?
Yes.
So, so, I mean, that's good. That's good to hear. I think that, you know, the the what was going on was. How the assessor's office, you know, depreciated them as compared to the personal property issue and how all that went. But but we don't hear much about it later, but the the idea with this, I guess you really have to look at. The sacrifice of ag land. And the benefits to the county and is it worthwhile to give up ag land? Pretty hard to find. A good argument to ever give up ag land, I think, because it anyway, but. Uh, well, certain it certainly have to look at that, wouldn't we? I mean, uh.
Yeah, and population density, I think, is a biggie. Out east, the density is nil.
Ha ha having lived here only twelve years. And having been coming over here since I was a small child, got some investment in the community. I I was impressed with the foresight that that occurred with the landfill. That has huge benefit to the county. Our property taxes are substantially less than they would be otherwise. I don't know what the figure it changes from year to year depending upon.
Yeah.
The revenue, but it 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 has some spectacular benefits. I don't take away, and unless someone can show me, I don't take away that those windmills benefited us. And I don't take away that these panels are going to benefit us either, so. I I think it is reasonable to measure what's the bang for the buck and the discomfort of. Something we know little about.
So, I'm sorry, that's what I can focus on is land use planning. Of course, the land here, we're talking about, we we have the assessors, you know, tax revenues, the economic impact, jobs and. Anything else, all those socioeconomic are all important factors. However, when I do zoning code amendment. I cannot, I I or I my focus is really is putting on zoning. Um, and not though are others economic benefits. Um, so I just want to make sure that's clear because I have no control over. The assessor's office, how they are going to tax turbines or or solar panels. Um, if they are going to repower, how are they going to tax that? I I can't do any of those. And I'm sorry, Dave, he was gonna say something.
I was just gonna. One of the things that um sounds like a lot of our wind generators have two point three megawatt generators on them. And it it takes almost a hundred times as much footprint to produce that with solar. So when you think about it, two point three or it's easier to think of it as a two point five acre or a two point five megawatt generator. Takes twenty five acres of panels to make that level of energy. It helps you understand. You brought up questions about ag land, Rick, and marked it too. It does give you a perspective on that.
Mochi, I can.
Go ahead.
Through another, I can throw another question out there and I don't want to sound like I'm advocating one way or the other. I'm really a. Genuinely hoping to engage in a in this conversation and it's my first on solar farms, but uh. It it can there be any kind of argument made in terms of uh? The viability of an agricultural operation and revenue streams that would come from one of these kinds of projects? And and what that means for keeping a an agricultural operation or a farm intact. Um, you know, out of out of that interest in preserving farmland or protecting farmland. Can anybody speak to that?
I I I can try because um. A a lot of times we we heard from. Landowners who actually farming the property for generations. I'm I mean, like generations. And the the younger generation is they are just not interested in continued the farming operations. However, they do not want to break up the land by doing subdivision or ranch at twenty acres in size or just sell. You know, a a series of twenty acres parcel to to have some money to support the land. And so they see leasing to developer is a good alternatives because. They still own the land. They are just leasing the land out for thirty years. Um, during this, not only they are going to get um. Income from leasing the land, they might have some royalties and I don't really know all the details for those. I know if you have. You know, wind turbines, you will have royalties, extra income. Um, but they they, this is another way for landowners to decide to to lease the land out. Because they want to keep the the land. They don't want it subdivided. So that's one benefits for landowners chose. Is their way of preserving family. So that's that's the end of argument that I heard.
Yeah, the the Lund Hill project, the ground that's in that one is was all grazing land. And some of it not so great. And that's not all the land that family owns. They have thousands of other acres that. This would uh pretty much support the operation of whatever they do on their other ground. They just took out seventeen, eighteen hundred acres of grassland for. And are making a pile of money.
So so I think everybody would agree, the areas that we are seeing on the screen. They are very different from properties in the east county.
Oh, yeah.
In regard to large scale solar development. Um, and I think that may be the reason why the current board wants us to. Look into these ten townships and ranges and see if we can have. Some kind of regulation that we can develop rather than. You know, if the point directions direction is no, solar development within these ten townships and ranges I prohibit use. That might be great for me because I don't have to do anything further just to draft an ordinance. However, think about the bigger picture is. There's also another process development can go through through the state. What the the implications of that? Because I'm not a lawyer. I don't know if that carry any weight. To me, I think local control is very important. I think everybody should have a voice. Um, I wouldn't suggest to just to say no. Um, maybe we need to think about a reasonable setback from property lines because if you can. I'm sorry, I couldn't zoom into this map better, but here my cursor is. This area is where the B P A night substation is located. Surrounding this nice substation are all those smaller sized lots, very different than the. Parcel configurations in east county that those are larger. Um, acreage owned by, you know, a few families. Um, it is going to impact. Landowners and residents in this area. Um, and I also want to circle back to Mark's comment earlier. Um, you talk about that we may not care about, maybe I didn't say it right, but you know, like other state agencies like Fish and Wildlife. They can talk about streams or ecology can and talk about uh water rights and things like that. We do look at those, but we also rely on those state agencies expertise during the C P A process. And that's why earlier I said we rely heavily to address permit conditions. Or mitigations through the C P A process because a lot of those site specific consent um constraints. Is only discover through the C P A process because we do ask for site specific reports, cultural resources included.
Yeah, I wasn't saying we we totally dismiss it, but but our charter, our.
Is zoning and that's.
Is really zoning and use, which begs a question, Dave. Pay attention now. Always wanted to say that to a teacher. What was the math again for the area that's covered with panels and the total acreage?
Well, basically, I I use the number two point five megawatts for a wind turbine, but they may actually be two point three.
And now what I was referring to was it was like seventeen hundred acres.
Oh, oh.
Uh, panels on.
I think I think it's gonna be about eleven hundred or eleven hundred and fifty acres of panels. Out of about a two thousand one hundred acre lease. That's off the top of my head.
Okay, that's that's colossal. Here's the question. We a few months ago, we. Had to add a definition to industrial land. We added the definition data center. Which doesn't employ a whole lot of people. It's a. Colossally big building with all sorts of recesses, resources being used with four people in it. That's what we're talking about with a solar panel farm is we're covering colossal amount of land. With a building to some degree, you know, is that, you know, what does that look like for us? Would we want a data center? I mean, I realize it's not industrial. It's a different deal, but but that's what we're doing out there. Being a little contrarian here, but.
Has the commissioners thought about maybe excising the solar out of the E O Z in this? In a heavily populated area?
They would like the planning commission's input and advice.
But of course.
Bring it back. And Dave, if I'm not accurate, please speak up. Yeah.
That was. What I was thinking about too along those lines. Could we? Make go back and do another update on the energy overlay zone, go through and. Uh. Make an effort to make changes. I mean, is that something that? Would be an option?
That always an option. However, if I wasn't employed by the county at that time, but I believe we spent a lot of. Resources and we did a lot of studies.
Yep.
To support the development of the E O Z. So if we are going to go back and do a meaningful update. We should go back and update some of those studies and reports. So we can have.
Mm hmm.
Actual factual information to support our update. Um, that is going to take time and resources. Um, so that surely is something that I can bring back if that's the consensus of the planning commission. I can bring that back to the county commissioner because right now. For twenty twenty three, I have to be honest with you. I do not have those budget in planning department. We still have, for the rest of the year, we still have other project. I have to, you know, take it before you.
Could it be possible that we could develop language that says that that addresses the the? Den human density issue. You talk about Lund and Bluebird, I think is the other one.
And no one live on Bluebird.
Yeah, I was gonna say that that those two fields right now, there are only two homes that can possibly see them. That's it. Um, and there is thousands of acres yet between them. Um, I mean, it just seems like that kind of condition is more conducive to this than. Driving down one forty two and on the night road and have this industrial plant there. I I. It would be nice to develop some language that maybe discourages that because I I don't think that's what I'd like to see.
That's the kind of input I need from every one of the planning commission members. Member to so I can, I can have something to.
Does anybody disagree with that? I don't.
You mean the Lund Hill one?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, there's, yeah, there you'd see him from a distance, but the. But the bluebird one, the bluebird one is gonna be pretty isolated. But the Bluebird one, the Bluebird one is gonna be pretty isolated. We do have an architect of the E O Z in the audience, if he wants to. Give us a little, a little insight.
It's entirely up to you, Chair.
Dana.
You gotta speak to the microphone though, because we have audience on Zoom and I can bring the mic to you.
Could you? Yeah, but you still talk.
Well, you know, when this first came up, I I agreed with the idea of a moratorium. To figure out some of these questions that didn't get addressed when we did the energy overlays on. Because you're you're exactly right, we know we've got enough solar language in there. To put up a legal defense that we looked at it. But there weren't any big solar projects back then. So when it came to things like setbacks and. You know, the niceties of what you needed to think about for zoning. There wasn't any place you could go and get an example to build off of like there was. There weren't that many wind project, big wind projects back then either, as far as that goes, but there were. A couple in California that you could use for, for an example. If I could backtrack for just a second. And I just sent this to Mochi. Oh Greg Gallagher put together a list of major taxpayers in the county. And if not including the uh tonnage fees from Republic. If you add all the employers, non-wind employers together, they pay right around five, six million dollars a year in property taxes. And if you add all the wind projects together, they pay about twelve million. So when if you're looking at benefits from property taxes. That that's for twenty twenty. And you know, our whole cost for the energy overlay zone was about about half a million dollars. It took twenty twenty alone, we got pretty good return on our investment. We've been getting that kind of money for quite a few years at this point. And then that doesn't include. You know, royalty payments to landowners, which, you know, you're never gonna hear those numbers, but they're big. Good, less for solar, more for wind.
It's Dana, right?
Yeah. I you know, let me think about that for you.
It's late, it's seven. Um when you're talking, I I think this is important for all of us to to remember, we're talking about personal property taxes. It's property taxes, but we're talking property taxes on the panels, the equipment, the windmills, so forth, okay? If that's a big number.
The the prod, the current project proposed using numbers from the assessor's office. Would pay just under a million dollars a year in taxes. And look, for instance, about a hundred thousand of that would go to our district seven, for instance. So you know, you you can put a price tag on the view. You know, is is the view worth a million dollars a year to the county? Our district and everything, and if it is, you know, ain't nobody elected me. You know, that's that's your call. But there is a definite financial loss for not doing these things. And you know, the one, the one thing that tends to get ignored. And this, this has been one of the real threads that's been lost from the early days of the energy overlay zone. Is we were trying to keep houses off of farm ground. You know, that was, you know, remember back then in two thousand, when you drove into town at night, you didn't see any lights out around Centerville. It was black out there. And I'm a transplant, I started coming up here in ninety three, but. You know, there's, there's a lot more houses on farm ground than there used to be. And one of the rea- in this area, I don't, less true in Bickleton, obviously. But you know, a whole reason for doing what we did back then. Remember, again, the context, the forest industry been closed except for SDS lumber. The aluminum smelter was in the process of shutting down. We were trying to figure out what in hell we could do for economic development. And I mean, you know, all that's been lost now, but it was pretty stark in nineteen ninety nine, nineteen ninety nine. But the the one thought that was on all of our minds. Was well, there's a lot of people that don't have a next generation to ranch. And their 401K is their land selling to developers. And one of the things we could do to forestall that, at least for some of them. And again, less true in Bickleton than here. Is up the value of the land with wind projects. And and it's true, we did not foresee solar coming as far north.
I know.
You know, it's in there, but we didn't see it coming this far north, but the flip side, when when you talk about. Losing land to solar, and I'm not a solar guy, you know, I mean, I I've done big solar projects at the time, but. That was thirty fifty megawatts back then. When you lose land to solar, you get a deposit from the developer that if the project goes bust, it all gets scraped off, same with wind. If you lose land to a house, house never goes away. And that that was very much on our mind back then. And uh you know, and it's it's, I mean, it's a differential of effect. You know, you're talking about one that uses thousands of acres and one that uses tens of acres. But the house is never gonna go away.
So got a question for you, Ian, do you have the mic?
Yeah, sorry.
Are you on the spot here? So no, so it brings up the question is. Why not still the wind term? We didn't run out of space, did we? I mean, it seemed to be something that. You know, work with agriculture benefited the farmers, keep the farm, I mean, may not be perfect, but there there was. Benefits, it did well, you know, why solar now? And not just more wind, why, you know, the wind hasn't stopped blowing?
Markets all win, all solar now. You know, you'll see some wind development probably happen again in East County. But the the market for so- solar is a lower cost renewable energy project and you can get in the ground faster. I mean, a lot and I mean. A lot of these wind projects, when you know, when I was, when we were watching them get built. Were getting paid eighty five bucks a megawatt hour for it. You know, that's not a number that you'll, you'll see printed someplace, but that's what's in the contracts of the solar, with the solar, sorry. With the wind projects. So the solar, a good solar contract would be thirty. Thirty five, so if you were, if you were the utility, which one would you buy?
Yeah.
You know.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a good answer and it helps, so trying to figure out. Well, you know, why the switch now and was it, you know, it's gonna be a couple of things is. That was not one I was considering, you know, one I was was tax benefits maybe towards solar that are not there for. Wind, but it's just cost of the infrastructure, what you can get for power is better, okay?
If you took all the tax credits away, the federal tax credits.
Away from the wind?
Yeah, and the solar, renewables in general. And kept the state, what they were called renewable portfolio standards in most places.
That's right.
You'd still have solar getting built more than wind. You'd see some wind, but you'd see a lot of solar.
Is there?
Thanks, Dan.
Any reason we couldn't say, look, you wanna do this, we wanna benefit to the county beyond the property tax benefit of. You know, some megawatt number. You know, what's our legal rights in in saying that and and if you wanna put it in. Dicey or locations, the price is higher.
I would think that it'd be better to. To limit the size in higher density places. If they wanna build there, they're gonna have to. Downsizing it because they're, I don't begrudge the landowner that leases to them getting a good payday.
Yeah, I don't either, it's just.
Have rights too.
That's the problem and.
That's, that goes the rub.
I don't think neighbors expected. When they bought, I mean, that that's a, anyway.
So.
So what else should we gather, have Mochi bring to us, I've been reading what I can online. Going through what we did in the past, um.
No, everything that's, everything that's out of the E O Z, they have to get a conditional use permit, is that right?
If the project is not entirely within the E O Z, they have to go through a C U P. Even your project is partially in E O Z, partially out, you still need to go through one conditional use permit process.
But isn't it also true that anybody connecting to Night Road has to go through C U P? According to county ordinance and regardless of if it's all in?
Yes, because they will need to connect to the Nitro Substation and Nitro Substation is outside the E O Z.
I think one other thought that came to mind is wind, wind is considerably less ag exclusive than solar, obviously. I mean, you you cannot use the ground for. You really, right now, there's not a way to use the ground two ways. And another thing I think we all have to bear in mind is there's already public records requests for a considerable number more parcels. I'm not, I already talked about two thousand acres, there's a public records request for. Almost that much more again right now to different agencies around, so we're not only talking that two thousand acre lease. There's at least one more, and actually, I believe there's two more, so all around Night Road. So that's something to bear in mind about, I think Mochi has brought forward the idea that it's. Pretty important to look fairly hard at this, and if you make the number closer to five thousand acres, it gets. Really important to look at. Early on, Mochi, in your directory comments, you said you wanted a list of items, you were speaking, you said, I want a list of items I can collect and share. With the other members of the planning commission, I didn't hear the end of that statement, I must have missed it.
I guess I need some help in directions. When we talk about to create zoning ordinance or regulations. Pertains to large scale solar project. I need to know what kind of information that will be helpful for the planning commission. To reveal, to get up to speed, that will help. While we have further discussion in developing the zoning ordinance, if that's the way that we want to go. I tried to not ask this question at the beginning of the meeting is. Do we want to allow solar development within this area? Because if the answer is no, then we do not need to have further discussion because it's a prohibition. But I just, I just want to make sure everybody understand, is even the county prohibit solar development? In the Nitro area? It that it may not stop solar development out there because they can still go through the state process. So just keep that in mind. Um because I I do not want to misled the public in any way that company say no, then they will have no solar development. Because that may not be the case. So if that's a risk that we are going to have solar project out there. Would that be better if we actually talk about some proper setback? Or in addition to population, when we talk about houses or, you know, people. Maybe we can also talk about if we have a thousand acre open space of land. Maybe we can put a maximum percentage of areas that solar panels can occupy. Um maybe some other creative thinking that we can. Take some control over solar development.
I have an assumption that it might not be right, and I think Matt talked about it some. I have an assumption that the parcel size in the area already developed, the individual parcels are much larger. But that's an assumption, is there? Uh when I look at that map, I s- I believe I see a lot of twenty acre parcels, for example, and so on and so forth. Um do the parcel maps, I know irrespective, they're different places. Are the parcel maps similar, or in fact, do the areas that have been developed for solar in the east end actually have huge parcels? Six hundred and eight hundred acre parcels.
They are larger parcels, yeah.
Okay.
They're big.
So I just wanted to make sure I was an assumption on my part. Okay, I was thinking of that as, is that a way to compare the two areas when you think about regulation? The the size of parcels that already exist, and it might be, I don't know, where there already are a lot smaller parcels. And more people living.
How many landowners are involved in that Night Road project? Anybody know?
I know.
It's gotta be quite a few of them.
They're like twenty, like for the project that is currently pending before EFSEC, I believe there's twenty five parcel numbers. But that's not twenty five landowners.
No.
Because a lot of them have, you know, multiple lands.
Probably closer to six or seven, that's just out of my head.
Okay, here's here's a something that's going through my head, I I see four. I- items that seem to be appropriate for us to 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 address. It would be nice to know, Mochi, what the likely property tax benefit to the county would be.
Yeah.
Um I it it you, the number that Dana offered was was pretty staggering, that's a pretty neat number that's been going on. Tendency for government to spend that money when they get it, however, it also happens, but. That's another discussion, so we've got, it'd be nice to know what we think these benefits look like over time. I think the size of the projects really does need to be looked at one way or another and. He, again, it it Bickleton is so hugely different, it's it's not comparison when you've got. Projects out there that probably have several twenties and an eighty and a hundred and twenty all owned by one individual, it was clearly. The plan to turn those into home sites, but anyway. So the size of the projects. If there are some other possible benefits to the county itself, to the the people within the county. Reduced property taxes benefit like the landfill gives us. Um and and I do think. It we need to consider, you know, the the arable land issue, I mean. Gosh, wouldn't it be great to put windmills in the gorge where, you know, the gorge scenic protection area? I mean, clearly, we recognize that we shouldn't do things like that, so. Why should we take some pretty decent farmland and, I don't know. Uh but that's at least four items that.
So I I want to get a clarification, when you talk about the size of the project, are you talking about the leased area? Or the area that they are actually going to fence it in?
A little bit of both. Um it 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 probably really more concerned with the. Land use directly underneath these things, how much is is really being taken up?
Well, I think they fence in their, whatever they lease, they fence in. And so whatever not covered by a panel is still unusable.
That that that's correct, so that's a problem, and we, it's one of the things we don't know enough about these things.
I might add, I don't know if you mentioned it, Mark, but the market valuation of existing properties, the effect on market valuation, did, maybe you said it, I don't know. But I know you talked about the tax that they brought in, but.
I didn't, and and that is a a good, what's the diminished value? That's going to occur to people, I do think that that a study ought to be done by by folks. Um that says, hey, you know, you're only gonna lose X because it it will have some impact. Um you you drive, I don't know how long, I don't recall how long Night Road is from one forty two to. Pothole or forest, whatever it is. But that's a long, long road, and that's a whole lot of people that have to drive by that stuff, so yes, there's likely to be diminished value. I think the term is pugil value. Um and I don't, I don't know how that's addressed, but that's a good one.
But I think you had a good idea though about that. Limiting the percentage of an open space or soda, how big it could be, which would be to tie into the density, population density there. As to limiting the size of a project. And then. For the whatever outside, would they have to use the same setbacks? As we're using in the E O Z, the five hundred to fifteen hundred feet.
So once again, we do not have a set setback requirement. But we will definitely use that as a reference because the E O Z is a part of the zoning. But is five hundred to fifteen hundred measuring from a residence, is that good enough? Should we actually measure it from property line?
But the E O Z right after that part that you just quoted says the location and density of residential uses in the vicinity and the nature of the. But the E O Z right after that part that you just quoted says the location and density of residential uses in the vicinity and the nature of the project may require increased setback requirements. That's in the existing E O Z. Right now, I, I guess the one question that came to my mind is what rubric or scoring guide do you use? You, you always provide us with one of those awesome matrices when you, or matrices. I don't know what the plural of that is. When you answer those questions, but so I, I'm wondering. To be honest with you, from your explanation before, it doesn't sound as scientific in terms of the setback as it maybe could be.
Right, because right now we have not really put this statement into test. Really good, because for the Lunn Hill proposal, like the Lunn Hill Solar. We had one house in the middle of the project. We did receive comment during the permitting process. We forward those comment to the developer and then I believe there was an agreement entered into by the developer and the landlord. And then the setback to that house was five hundred feet. And we did not hear back from the landlord. So. There's some negotiation going on. I'm not saying that we encourage that kind of negotiation, but I really cannot. Have a matrix done because I just don't have enough sample size to, to talk about that. And, and some of Mark's questions, I, I'd like to. Pour by as much as I can. But once again, because we are not talking size specific proposal. And so it will be difficult for me to find out potential tax benefits because I don't know the project size. I can, I mean Dana did send something that he obtained from the county treasure in regard to the top ten developers. So those, you know, could be wind turbines, could be the landfill. I can share those, you know, no problem. Size of the projects. Right now I have one pending E O Z in the east county. We have one pending before FSEC. So I can pull those information, but I don't know if that's sufficient because we are talking about. Not just one project, we're talking about ten palm shoots and ranges. We talk about the possibility of proposal that could happen east of highway ninety-seven, because that's included.
What might help you, or at least the way I would view it is that if, if Lund is. Fifteen hundred acres, I don't recall what it is, but whatever. Because at this point, I'm assuming they're probably are getting personal property tax bills for their equipment. That would give us some idea per acre and we could extrapolate that. To have some idea what this, what this benefit overall, all nine thousand acres predicted or whatever. I mean, we would, we would get some idea. One of the, a, a thought, Dave, on the. Diminished value problem is it sort of gets into the, you know, reparations, you know. How far away, if you live way up the end of Cedar Valley. And, and you have to pass through all that, I mean, where, I mean, that, that's a real troublesome analysis.
I was just thinking of people who are right at the project area. I wasn't considering people further away. And there actually are already existing studies that exist. And there's a study being done by Wazoo right now. Although they're a little late in the game in my opinion, but there are existing studies that, that show that.
Those might be, those studies might be useful to us to look at to see if there is some. Significant tangible diminished value.
I, I have some studies, but they are not, like at the county specific. Right, so I do, I, I can share those with you and you can decide if those are helpful. The Wazoo studies, I. I was not actively participant, but I did follow. So they, they have a meeting last week and I don't know if anyone participated and. I did not attend the full meeting, but I did attend the morning section and. And they were sharing some of those mapping to determine, you know, the list conflict solar citing of solar development. They give you a range of areas. Essentially, you have to add all those variables together to make a determination whether this is appropriate. Place to cite solar development. I think at this point in Washington State, we all recognize that. Solar is going to happen. That that's the state's direction. But how can we as a local government, how can we best protect our residents? Not like protect, but you know, how can we do the best to eliminate the negative impact? To the, the people, the residents live adjacent to an area that's prime for solar development. Because the Nitro substation, substation is there is, is a very expensive, if you want to build a brand new. Substation is billions of dollars. They, all those green lines, I, I know it's not, and if anyone wants to have this map, I can email you a copy. But all this line, the, the teal color line. Those are existing transmission line is already there. It's just a really good location from a developer standpoint. And how, what can we do for people who purchase land in all this area that they have five twenty acres? They do not expect to see. Their land, their adjacent lands is covered by all these solar panels. What can we do? Tony.
So. I'd like to ask Dave a quick question because it looks like that you've looked into this fairly extensively. So. If you went over the, the mapped area here and you really. Analyze so, so. If I knew more about it, maybe as much as you, I'd go over and I'd put the contours on it to begin with. And look at the power lines, locate the substation. I mean, just from what I'm seeing. The ag land, you know, you might really find out, and you may already know this, that, that. The, the ag land is gonna be the most likely to get developed. In and around where the existing substations are, you know, I, and, and I looked through that, tried to find. Where the substations were, what ag land was, you know, what was kind of going on with that. I didn't like contours over. I didn't really know. The details exactly, but if I see that really. In general rural, I see a lot, high density area. I'm gonna pretty much rule that out, right? And I wonder how much you could narrow down. The, the potential areas with what, what you know, where when we came back to a workshop, you know, think. Okay, the way I see it is, maybe these areas would get hit the hardest and. It's this type of, you, you know. I'm just assuming right now it would be ag land, but I'm not really sure. We know it's not gonna be the forest land, the open space. I'm. Kind of guessing that if you put the contours on it, you're gonna have some problems. In a lot of that out on the west side, right? That open space. So you kind of see what I'm getting at? Is there something that you could kind of look at and put together? It just generally speaking, okay, we, we'd have the potential of. A lot of projects and then that we could use that maybe as something to determine. What kind of a problem we really have, right? I mean, how big could this get? I mean, could it get to be? So, so just going back to the energy overlay zone and the wind turbine project, when we went through this process. I could never imagine what we see now. It didn't, it didn't even seem. Not that it's good, bad, indifferent, whatever it is, you just couldn't picture that it would get as big as it did. You think about the cost of these things and, and everything involved. And how fast it happened, five years' time, we were going back due to the settlement agreement. You read that. With a thousand megawatts really in five years? So couldn't picture it. So that's something that would be nice to see too. It's like, you know, let's look at the, what potentially, how big could this be? And, and, and. That would kind of give at least me an idea of. You know, what, what we really need to do. Could it be somewhere else? Could it, or are they gonna go after these areas that? We know are prime ag land or something and, and make decisions from there. So.
Well, I guess I would say first off, the reason the solar developers are so interested is obviously this, the substation is there. And secondly, the ground tails the way to the south. I think that solar developers, if they could, would fill everything that was not forested. Even east of Knight Road to west of Hill Road. If, if they were allowed to. So I think right now, just sitting here, there's about eighty-five hundred acres that's on the block right now. That's what I think. That's just in the Knight Road substation area. I actually more than think that I'm pretty sure that's the case.
So how far can they go? I mean, is, is five miles, ten miles a big deal when you're getting to a substation from a project?
When we were in Primeville, they said they could be twenty miles from a substation. So that's what they said.
I went over that and looked around, you know, and yeah. It's interesting, kind of give us an idea.
So it does make it cheaper to get the power to the substation here. But they seem to be willing in some locales to go a lot further from a substation. So they can get quite a ways. I'm, I'm not sure and Tony probably knows, but I think Bluebird is building a. Some power line to get to where they're gonna hook to the grid, but he could comment. I can't, he wanted to speak.
They, they are modify, their plans are to modify the substation too as well for that added capacity. But yeah, it's not that far away. But back to the, it always comes down to the legal ramifications for the county and stuff. And that's one thing I think we need to take that lens of every decision that we make. To make sure that we're not putting the county in jeopardy of. You know, maybe look at the legal side of it. And. Just look at it from that aspect is, is what, how is it gonna put us in trouble down the road? Each one of these maybe amendments or whatever we decide to do.
Look at the legal side of it. Are you talking about lawsuits from neighbors? Or lawsuits of people who want to develop their property and might be.
Both. I think we need to look at both sides of it because, you know, I have some friends that are, I would have been. Sure, they would have been against solar. And they're for it.
Well, yeah, because they have kids.
Well, they're farmers, they're farmers and some of them have farm ground and stuff. But then I have other friends that, that are staunchly against it. And I, you know, respect all of them. I don't care either way.
Yeah.
But we need to make the, we need to start from the legal aspect of it, you know, and not get the cart ahead of the horse. Do you have any idea how many, what the percentage are for it and what the percentage again? That was my next question is if you have, do you have any kind of consensus? Because that would be pretty helpful. But even regardless of that, we need to stand by the, you know, what the law, what it would, their overall outcome would be.
One of, on this legal issue, Tony and, and Norma. It's not just, if, if. If we present to the county that, you know, we're. We're, we're taking the majority's opinion. FSEC can still walk right over the top of us. So. We want to, I think it's important that we not make any kind of false promises because the truth of the matter is. I personally think a lot of this is nonsense because I think the, the state's gonna walk right over the top of us.
Yeah, but we still need to do what we thinks best for our county, even if they do do that.
I, I hear you, but.
I mean, I'm not saying go out and spend, you know, a huge amount of money on, on something that we can't, we're gonna overall be walked over anyway, but.
Mochi, is there evidence that FSEC has actually respected local ordinances that you know of?
It's not FSEC, it's the governor.
Okay, but it starts with the FSEC process and they have to do a fairly significant.
They, they would make a determination and. I, I mean, I probably mix up with projects, but there are projects that they do not. They would consider as inconsistent with the local land use regulations. So they make that determination. So what would happen next is they would then go through an adjudication process before the governor. And then the governor can decide whether they, he would want to use his power to preempt local regulations. And then take it from there.
But if we had no regulations at all. Is that a better thing in an FSEC investigation or is it better that we have some land use for which? To which they need to be consistent?
I'm not smart enough to answer that question.
Okay.
Because right now people can say that we don't have regulations locally for solar development. I believe that that's not hundred percent correct because we rely heavily on SEPA. And through the SEPA process, we can impose conditions for solar development. Or other projects, land use that's not. Specifically identify, you know, in that particular zoning. So we do have some regulations. We just do not have the so-called zoning directives to talk about setbacks. To talk about what we need, what the expectations are, like the performance standard, that type of thing.
But that's what the Board of County Commissioners wants, is that correct from this group?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Mochi, I've got a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Earlier you mentioned creative thinking and I'm just curious as to whether you have any specific examples. I don't know whether they'd be from other counties or, or whomever that, that you might be able to share with us of, of, of creative thinking that. Might actually be helpful here that others have actually developed versus us having to recreate the wheel there.
I can show, share some of the regulations that develop, you know. By other counties, you know, there are few examples out there. I, I'm happy to share those.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So I've been taking notes so far and seven thirty, so I just want to make sure that I, I'm taking accurate notes. And I know what the expectations are.
Do you know of any other solar projects that are? In a populated density spot like what we're looking at in this moratorium area? Anywhere?
In our county?
No, 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 statewide. Because most of the, these solar projects are in places where there are just basically nobody there. The ones in east of Moxie, that's just nothing out there.
I will have to look. I don't know if that's exactly true. You know, there are few. Project that is going through FSEC that is also in rural, you know, spastically populated area. But they just have not been through the process yet.
Because I know those two out east of Moxie, they got, the governor signed those yesterday or something.
Yeah, it's only this month and they just posted on the FSEC website is in Yakima County.
Yeah, and I mean, you go out there north of Sunnyside and east of Moxie and there's. Miles of nothingness.
Hey, it's home to somebody. I know a guy who pastures up there.
But this has a lot higher density population.
Oh, yeah.
For sure.
And that's what I.
You know, I, I wanna, do you know how much, where does Clickatack County fall in the state in terms of how much renewable energy is produced? Do you know? Are, are we, sorry, one of the top three or? I don't know, maybe Dana.
Dana probably knows. Number one.
Okay.
And have been for quite a spell.
I had heard Columbia County had been putting in a lot of, but that's also, I think, in square miles of smaller county.
And hopefully we're gonna get another big wind project going in the next year or two.
What about the? Up storage, is that still in the works? I mean.
It's going through the, the FERC process. FERC just issued their draft E I S for the public to comment. So they are going through the, the environmental review process right now. So everybody kind of have a list of questions that you want to ask and, and Tony, talk about the legal ramification. So may I get some direction is? How would you like to proceed? So I, so everyone can be prepared for the May fifteen workshop if there's one.
Uh, I'm on a pretty steep learning curve right now. I would like to read what's happening in other counties particularly. And I'd like to understand a little more about the history myself. I might be the only one that needs that. I'd like to tap into Dave Barta's mind a little bit too. I'd like to tap into Dave Barta's mind a little bit, too, if that's possible, if he would present more, because it's it's really important. I don't see the ability of the county to stop solar development. I understand about the sta- stations and the lines and, I mean, it's very valuable uh business opportunity for quite a few people, I think, and it's very hard to, we live in America. It's, we have people, investment runs, we 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 invest for our families over time and I think it's very important to make good choices. Back in nineteen, in the nineteen nineties, when I was driving back and forth through Clickatack County on a weekly basis, I also had no idea there could be so many wind uh turbines. I had no idea. And looking across, I have relatives in Sweden, and from the top of the grade at Goldendale, they looked out over Oregon and saw nothing but red lights. And, you know, I mean, it's 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 just huge. So um I wouldn't wanna make any decisions until I understand more. So anything you can do to help me, I'll take advantage of it.
So would that be okay? And if Dave is willing, maybe Dave and I can get together and maybe prepare a packet? That may be helpful for the Planning Commission in preparation for the next workshop on May fifteen? Are you okay with that, Dave? Okay. And I will try to address the legal ramification, but I don't know if I will be able to um before the next workshop. So I I will try to collect as much information as possible.
And if we venture in into a CUP process or something like that, is there rules and regs we can put in place that the governor can't overthrow?
Preemption is preemption and it's.
Across the board.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I I just being honest here, that's how I read it, but of course I'm not a lawyer.
I I would like to, and maybe s- some of the other members might need to look at some of that. That'll help us make some decisions. And and maybe not waste some of our time.
Or get the solar people to just lease all of it.
It does seem like.
Or not, that's
Yeah.
Beside the point, but if they just lease from everybody, pay them the same money. Problem to go away. You'd learn to like looking at them.
I don't think it's always about money for everybody. Um, somebody brought up about testimony already. Uh, I think there must be someplace people can read testimony from prior, like the moratorium hearing. Didn't somebody bring that up here just a little bit ago, wondering what how people felt one way or the other about it? Or not, I just was, yeah, well, I think that indicates how they feel about solar in in this, in this more populated area, and I just thought if people could, newer to look for that, they could read it.
Yes, um, we don't have those posted, because as commissioners and I, you know, uh, but I do have hot copies, you know, in PDF format. I can surely compile.
I don't wanna make you do that. I was hoping that the commissioner just had it somewhere, so anybody wanted to look at it could look at it, but maybe they don't. I might be mistaken.
Don't believe they have it posted on the, and it's not a lot of work. I'm willing to do whatever that takes to help everyone.
Right.
It's not.
If if nobody wants it, it's doesn't matter, but somebody brought it up a while ago. That's all I thought.
I think Rick was actually asking about the history and the reasoning why we have the moratorium, so he was trying to get some background. Would the testimony that we get during the public hearing process be helpful to, would you like to read those?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, because anything we can learn about it, if I'm remembering right, too, maybe a couple of months ago, I read about one of the projects that already exists. So you get a chance to see what maybe learn a little more about what they're after, and then when you know that. Uh, but on the other uh subject that Tony had mentioned about getting uh irregardless of what we do, the governor could, you know, uh override that and and there is something maybe to be said for keeping the energy overlay zone in addressing things so that it if we just did nothing and eliminated any possibility, then maybe that would make it easier for them than if we really addressed uh what our concerns are and incorporated that into the energy overlay zone. You see what I'm saying? You you know, because if we just eliminate it, then they might be more apt to uh just kind of pass it off and go, well, we're just gonna do whatever we wanna do, but otherwise, they kind of we're still putting them through the permitting process, follow me? Uh, I don't know, just something to think about, but I think that should be a conversation we at least have. Like, how are we better off to, because our concern is the people of Clickatack County? You know, people that live here. I mean, I realize these people come in and they 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 offer something to a a number of people. I get all that, that's, you know, uh, but uh, you know, the rest of us live with it, deal with it, you know, so how are we addressing their concern? So I definitely would like to hear their testimony. And then I wanna learn a little bit more about the projects in it, rather than have Mochi bring a project and go over it. I think I can read what I need to online, right, and and learn, because I seen them, I think I already did a couple of months ago, to some extent, just kind of skimmed through it, but I'll do that more after this discussion, and maybe I'll have a better idea.
Um, so like, right now, I'm processing a EOZ permit for the Bluebird Solar. And that one is going through the county process. But that's all in the East County. In the Night Road area, we do have a Carriage Project that is before FSEC right now. And the applications and all the supportive documents are actually posted on the FSEC website. Is a pretty big document. Um, so I can definitely, you know, send a link, because that project before FSEC, you can actually kind of see that is how it related to these areas on the map. Anything that you you you're gonna spend a lot of time reading, because I do anything you ask, I probably have something that I can share with you. I just wanna make sure those is uh things that you really interested in, like if Norma, you want to know about the history of the energy overlay zone, we can go over that. I did not bring that up tonight is because the areas that we are going to focus our energy on is both inside and outside of the energy overlay zone. And so I don't want to confuse the issues for projects that's currently happening in the East County, because that doesn't seem to have as much impact as the areas that we are talking about, because those, we have a lot of smaller parcels, smaller sized parcels in this area compared to East County. Our county is just too diverse, in the east side to the west side, it's just too different in many way.
Rick, they, uh, if you just Google FSEC Carriage Solar Project, you can on their site pretty easily find their application. And it's sure, she's right, she's understating it, it's pretty extensive. So, but there is a section just on land use. And I know that's really your forte, so you can just go through that whole thing.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you clarify, is is that project within the moratorium area?
Yes.
And it's proceeding through review there, just because, I understand.
They can submit an application with the state. And the state have to make a determination whether the moratorium have any impact to this project pending before the state. Um, actually, April twenty fifth, FSEC is going to have like a public information meeting at the Golden Dell Grange Hall here. Um, everyone's uh welcome to participate. They are going to have an open house, and then they are going to have a public meeting. A part of that is going to be virtually as well, so you can participate via Teams, I believe. And if you go on to FSEC website, you actually can get all those information, and you can sign up and get the call-in numbers. If you can be here in person, that is going to be a Tuesday night, starting at four thirty, I believe. So is is four, seven forty-two? Do we want to continue this discussion, or maybe we want to put a break here, so I will ask Dave when we can get together to kind of get a list and compile a reasonable size packet for your review. And I also want to ask the chair if you want to maybe take the next twenty minutes to see if the public in the audience or we on Zoom, if they have any comments that they wanna share with us.
Sure, I guess we could do that. It's um, we'll limit you to the three minutes apiece.
Either way. You can sit there. My name is Candy Mangason, and I've lived here for quite a while. I don't think that the Planning Commission understands how many properties there is coming up. And this, there's at least nine hundred acres plus south of Golden Dell. You know, it isn't, we, I know what, is it because I have friends? And I'm a farmer and stuff, and so it gets out, because remember, this is all secret. They they would sign their leases, and I have a lease, a blank one, so I know what they're doing, these companies. And if you ever get one, you better have a lawyer read it, is all I can say. I used to be in real estate for twenty-seven years, and I've, I've read many, many, many uh things that people have written, and whoever writes it, the rights are gonna be on their side, okay? So so it's gonna be on the side of the solar companies, but we're talking right here, south of Golden Dell, you guys. Both sides is, both sides of ninety-seven, both sides of South Columbus. Now, who's gonna stop at Golden Dell, the town? We've tried talking to the mayor, go near and out the other, not gonna happen, I guess. This is all secret, and when it comes out, it's gonna hit hard. They're covering, the chat, the panels are covering up our food source, our food source. Hello? That new house is already, uh, he's already put out a bill that's gonna stop some of these foreign entities to buy up our farm land. But he hasn't tagged on the leases that are covered up our food land, okay? No more cattle, no more wheat, no more hay to feed your cute horse that you're sitting out there, okay? So this is if you wanna get some information, go to seastwentytwenty.org. Greg Wagner has put a lot of information on, alright, he's worked hard on this, okay? Because a lot of people don't have time. I understand you guys who work it. So so go on, add that one, and like Ochi says, go on to FSEC. Yeah, so anybody else?
Um, I'm Rosal, and I'm also a Golden Dell resident. Um, Mucci, you brought up the the GMA, um, only being partial here in our county. Um, do we know what our urban development areas are in our county? Have those been established? Okay, um, because there's, there's lots of documentation too about, um, I think, planning uh dot org. They have, they have a a lot of good resources for people who are in your position right now, when it comes to making these type of decisions. And so that would be something to, you know, to research, because these aren't, these aren't just, these are not new things. These are happening all over our country. Um, I've done a lot of research myself, and these are some of the the nation's largest uh solar, solar projects that I've come, that I've done, that I've done research on. And when you talk about Primeville, I think that Primeville is three times smaller than the ones that we're talking about. Um, so I would, I would encourage you to um go to that planning dot org. I can send Mucci the link. She can also maybe put that part of the, you know, packet for research. Um, also, RCW eight eighty point five zero point zero nine zero. Um, that talks about FSEC, um, and how important it is for us to have ordinances, because even though, um you know, the the governor may have, you know, oh, you may oversee that decision. They are supposed to consider our existing ordinances that we do have, and um, it's if we don't do this now, um, and we do it after the fact, I mean, Cypress Creek has already put up, put their their permit up 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 forward, so I think that we might even be behind the ball on that, you know, for for, we'd have to, what would we adjudicate against? If there's nothing to, you know, there's no ordinances for us to even adjudicate against, but it's really important to also research that law. Because it does state in there that they're supposed to consider our existing um county laws.
All right, just for the record, one more time, I'm not universally against solar. However, public records request, documents coming out of internal from the county came from the Board of County Commissioners, I believe it actually originated, it probably out of the Economic Development Office. Handwritten notes clearly indicated over four years ago, they knew of ninety-two hundred acres, and they named the companies, they named the road locations, the corridor of ninety-seven, Hocker Road, Night Road. Our county knew we would be facing over nine thousand acres in this valley, did nothing. In the same timeframe, there was a workshop in which Mochi, questioned by Dave Souter. She said the EOZ is not adequate for what's going on. Later in the day, they said, we needed to update that and make sure we steer them away from the populated areas. I don't know why that didn't happen then. Anytime you turn nine thousand acres into industrial site, don't you think there should be local ordinances controlling it? There's eighty-five hundred people in this valley. Only thirty-five hundred live in the city, five thousand people. The view shed here, remember how our valley is shaped. It's an amphitheater. It will be projected over and impact thousands of people. You have a great job ahead of you. I believe there is room for solar in our valley, but accommodating the financial packet of the solar corporations should not be at the expense of that eighty-five hundred people. Right across the creek, Rock Creek, there's lots of land within reach of that twenty-mile power line. The only reason they wanna hear is because they'll make more money, but it should not come at the expense of the people of this valley. But there is room here. There's probably thousands of acres if you sensibly cite it.
Dennis Schroder, um, one thing I would like to say is that uh the testimonies that took place here, I believe it was last month or whatever, um about the moratorium, it, I'm just throwing out a a figure roughly. Seventy-five percent were uh for the moratorium, basically, most of those against solar itself. Um, and then you asked about, was there a written testimony? Um, I have it on my computer. Um, it was sent to me, and I don't know if it was obtained through a public records request or what, but I mean, I found my own testimony in there, so I mean, it's there, and you need to study it, but it's a, it's pretty much a given. And and then something else that I I heard mentioned was that you wanna know about the uh tax gain, I guess you might say, for the um for the county itself, as far as if it goes into solar, then what is the return on it? And yeah, you should look at that, but something else you should look at is that if the if property is developed as rural residential, you need to take a look at that, too, and I think that you would find that in the long run, that the um, I I personally think, the numbers I've ran, I think the county would be shooting themselves in the foot as far as uh what they would gain short term on the uh or set amount on the um, on the tax gain gain versus um if it went to residential. And there's a number of reasons for that, because residential will continue to appreciate. And solar, the land value is locked in according to what I've learned, and also the. Um, the equipment itself is, even though it's attached to the ground, becomes. Personal property tax, which is depreciated on the yearly basis. So if you look at this on a. Twelve, fifteen, twenty year projection, I think you'd be surprised at the numbers. And. In, in the last, I would say at least fifty years, the, the main growth around here has been, uh. Rural land. Being used for, uh, residential. And returned into residential, and my own family farm is a, uh, typical case of that. I mean, I grew up on Rimrock and there was three fa- family farms, there was three farms total. On that road. Last time I counted, which was several years ago, there's over fifty homes up there. Rural residential growth is part of. Actually, rural and even urban growth is just part of life. Um, so I'm not saying that necessarily everybody should divide up their land or whatever, but. Um, the, this town itself has stayed stagnant, um. I mean, I can think back as far as into the sixties. And the town has hardly grown, but the population of the county has changed significantly. And if you want business in town, you're not going to get it. By putting out thousands of acres of solar panels. Once they get built, the guys that built them are going to be gone. The company that builds them are going to be gone. And there aren't going to be. If it was homes, there aren't going to be people coming into town to patronize businesses here. For example. But anyway, I've got. Several arguments over the whole thing, but I'm not going to hog the mic.
Uh, Russ Hansen, uh, we're right in the middle of the whole Night Road, uh, project, along with Rose Hill. Um, I agree with the population density thing. We've got, we're at nine homes that I can see from our house. They're gonna have solar right up to their property line. Five hundred feet setback from my house, doesn't even reach my property line. So technically, they could put solar panels right at the edge of my property, which I've got a. You know, I've got that farm animals and stuff out there. We've got to, you know, mow it and stuff. I don't want solar panels right next to it. Uh. There's a lot of property in the east end of the county that was mentioned earlier, that I think is perfect for solar. It shouldn't be picking up ag land. Uh, another thing I think about, they're proposing a two acre lithium battery storage unit. Right behind her house. Does anyone know what two acres of lithium batteries can do? Nothing catches on fire, you know, that's toxic fumes, it's the west wind, Golden Dell's done. Uh, you know, those things need to think about setbacks need to be from property lines, not the residents. Because we live on the whole property, we don't just live in our house. You know, those are things that we've got to consider. Uh. Another thing, I'm gonna lose my train of thought here, but this, you know, there is, they, they mentioned the Carriage Project, it's just the beginning. We know property leased. In front of us, on the side of us, behind us, so technically, we're going to have potentially solar projects on three sides of us. Could possibly be four. Uh, and that's not what we came here for. I listened to, uh. Who is it? The director at KVH talking about having a hard time getting professionals here, nurses, doctors. The prosecutor can't hire another lawyer to help you here. We're not going to get professional people move here. They're gonna, they're gonna come here, they're gonna want to build nice houses, they're not gonna want to look at thousands and thousands of acres of solar. It's not gonna happen. This is just going to be a solar stinkhole, basically. They should just change it to Thorndale instead of Golden Dell if this happens. Because, you know, people just won't want to come here. Thanks.
So is anyone on Zoom would like to provide some comments, because I don't want to make this meeting much longer, maybe. Anyone wants to speak online, can you maybe unmute or raise your hand? I'm not seeing anyone. Oh, Sherry. Sherry?
Um, yeah, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity, uh, for public input. Um, I appreciated the question from the Planning Commission earlier regarding looking at what other counties have done. Regarding large scale solar. I, I think that's a really good idea. Uh, ten counties in Ohio have banned large scale solar. So, you know, I, I don't have all that details, but again, a very good idea to look at. What other counties have done, and I would suggest those ten counties in Ohio. Um. And also, uh, there was a moratorium some years back. For marijuana and the county decided to ban marijuana and wrote zoning ordinance. To ban marijuana, growing a marijuana. And, um, at least you could do something with the land the next year with solar. Your, the contracts are thirty years with two additional ten years, um, so up to fifty years. Contract on those lands. So that's significant to be looking at as the Planning Commission, how long it could be in play. And then also I heard it brought up, April twenty-fifth, next Tuesday. FSEC, the state agency is coming to our county. At the Golden Dell Grange, and I, I would highly suggest you all look at, uh, this meeting. This is in regards to the Carriage Project as they spoke about that has been, the application has been submitted. I highly suggest you go online and you read that application. It's called, um, the A S C. I, I think application citing, um, but it, it's a lengthy document. Um, but I would highly suggest that our count, our, our planning commissioners, uh, look at this. Be involved on Tuesday, on Tuesday, uh, FSEC State, the Committee, Commission, Council, whatever they are. The state people, sorry, I'm not too professional, but, um, I'm trying to be. They will be taking public comments and those public comments will determine, will be input on. The state agency's CIPA threshold determination. And although they may not make that determination that night, all the comments submitted either prior. Um, and it's kind of like any other CIPA, it is like a CIPA determination threshold in their announcement, they call it such. And so it's vital that our county be involved in making comments that night. To FSEC, even if we do not have ordinances in place, we do have a moratorium. On that area where this project is proposed to be cited. So I feel this is very important to get in front of that eight ball, right, right at the beginning with FSEC, make comments. Let them know we have a moratorium, we're working on it for that area. I don't know. Um, I heard Mochi's working with the, uh, other departments to look at that Carriage or application to prepare comments for. The state agency on Tuesday. Again, it's important, they're, they're submitted by Tuesday. To be considered for their CIPA threshold determination. And then, um. Also, I do have the moratorium comments, and I'm sure more, uh, Mochi can get them, but, um. Hopefully, we can put that on the CESE twenty twenty dot org website. And again, there's lots of good information. And I would suggest that as the county moves forward in attaining more large scale solar, that maybe the Planning Commission could tap. Have a tour of the Lunt Hill facility. And kind of look at what a large scale solar facility really looks like. And, uh, with the tax depreciation for the property tax on these renewable energies. It's true, we've looked at that. In fact, our county assessor. And the B O C C admitted in a meeting that every year when these, uh, green energy. Tax depreciation by eight and a half percent goes down, it shifts the burden to the people. And the people have to make up for that revenue, such as in our property taxes. So that's, should be considered as our county moves forward. Citing these large scale solar, that if every project's going to hurt us in the future in ten years and fifteen years, and they're paying. Very little and we're making up the difference, that's something I hope you guys consider. And then also with the large scale batteries, the lithium ion batteries, they're called BES. Um, I'm not too informed on them, but in Morris, Illinois, I believe it's twenty twenty-one. Uh, they had a large scale lithium bi- uh, battery fire, they had to evacuate. Four thousand people, I believe, out of the town. It took three days to put it out. And, and it took cement, tons of cement. And I think that with the density of where. Of what this, uh, townships that you guys are all looking at. To write ordinances and protections like you, like the county has for marijuana, I'm going to bring that up again. If we could ban marijuana. We really need to be looking at these large scale solar, and I appreciate the task you have in front of you. And again, please look at what other counties have done. They haven't been shy. They see what harm it can do, especially to the beautiful town of Golden Dell, the seat of our county and its future. So thank you, and I hope to see you at the April twenty-fifth, FSEC meeting. And so thank you again for the opportunity.
Okay, I know it's past eight o'clock, but we have one more person on Zoom, so maybe we can take one more public comment, and Joe?
Hi, thank you, Mochi. Uh, thanks to the commission and thanks for the public participation. So my name is Joe Ross, I'm the Director of Early Stage Development for Next Era Energy. Um, you know, I think these types of public, uh, processes are fantastic. I, you know, I cover Oregon, Washington, Idaho, and Montana for my company. And sorry about that, my little lovely assistant here is pitching in, but real quick. Um, you know, what I fundamentally try and, uh, preach both internally and externally is right project, right location. So as I listen to a lot of the public input. You know, talking about the potential opportunities in and around the, the county. Um. Wholeheartedly support, you know, these types of processes. We want to be a source of information. Um, and also a, a source of, you know, trying to overcome the misinformation that's out there. And so. Um, you know, as the, the county works through this process, you know, please look to me and my, um, colleagues. As, you know, a source of information. We are, you know, always available to answer questions. Um, you know, can't emphasize that enough. Um, and again, just, just want to thank everybody for their participation. I think this is great in defining what's right for the county. I live here in the Northwest. We are not a fly-by-night developer, you know, we are the number one developer in the entire country. And for good reason, you know, yes, as Sherry had pointed out, you know, the. The lease agreements are for roughly thirty years with the opportunity typically to extend it. You know, to ten-year options, which means we are members of the community for life, essentially. And so, yeah, I just want to emphasize, you know, our focus, prioritization on right project, right location. So thanks for everybody's time and, uh, look forward to, to spend in the future.
Thank you. So I think that should be all for tonight, and I promise you this will be the last workshop. I will continue to notify everyone on my email list, and if you want me to add you to my email list, just send me an email. And I will add you to, and thank you all for coming. Do you need a motion?